The way we like to begin these sessions is to ask candidates to describe why they're basically running, why it motivated them to run, and what difference you think it would make to have you on the city council at this point in time.
Yeah, I'm Tom DuBois, and I'm running because I really care about the future of Palo Alto. I think a lot of people would say that, but I've lived here since 1995, been pretty involved in the schools, and over the years, I really started to notice changes to the city. And a couple of years ago, that spurred me to get active more at the city level. I got active in Measure D campaign last fall, and since then, I've really tried to remain engaged with the city, working on the housing element update, going to council meetings, ARB meetings, PTC meetings, and I really think I can make a difference. I think it's kind of a critical juncture for Palo Alto, really deciding the future of our city, we're working on our comprehensive plan update, and I think there's kind of competing visions for the future of the city.
So I wonder if you could kind of outline what you think those competing visions are and what your view of them is?
Sure. Well, you know, I think there's immense pressures here, obviously. Cost of land is very expensive, and some people, I believe, really want to see more urban future for Palo Alto, really looking at more dense buildings, higher buildings, and then other people really would like to see the city evolve rather than be redeveloped, kind of maintain its smaller town feel, it's a nice family town with great schools, and so I think it's really a question of the pace of development and the quality of development that occurs. Palo Alto is a pre-built-out city, and so I think we can afford to be choosy about the types of projects we approve, we don't necessarily need to grant exceptions for buildings to exceed zoning, and so, you know, I think the question really is, how quickly do we urbanize, and do we constrain that to a few areas of the city where in the last few years, it feels like projects have popped out, popped up all over town, really without concern for where they are, if it makes sense in terms of transportation services?
So your view is obviously that the current council majority has come down the wrong side of many of those projects. Could you be specific and give us a couple of examples of where you would have wished the outcome would have been different?
Litten Gateway is probably a good example. My understanding is developer initially came forward with a two-story building, he was encouraged to add housing and make it a much larger building, and over the course of that project, I believe it was even higher than it is now, and it came to council, and they said, "Why is there only housing on the top floor? Affordable housing, kind of prime location in town," and they actually removed the housing. So we ended up with a very large office building, it was a PC, and the PC benefits there, to me, are minimal. And so, you know, if you look at what's happened during this current council, I think we've had more commercial space developed downtown than we have had in the previous 20 years cumulatively, which is interesting, because right now, everybody's sounding very resident-focused, but, you know, from my perspective, it hasn't really been demonstrated.
The Litten Gateway project, of course, was a PC project, and there really have been relatively few PC projects that the council has considered over the last few years. We'll get to the issue of PC reform in a second, but since most of the development has taken place in Palo Alto that you're objecting to has been under the normal zoning code, I wonder if you could speak to what steps you think need to be taken, if any, to constrict that code so that that development is not possible?
Sure. You know, again, I think in the current environment, we're getting buildings that are strictly within code, but built out to the absolute maximum. A lot of times, they go in front of our architectural review board and ask for design exceptions, and the size of some of those design exceptions have been getting larger. And so I think, you know, outside of total square footage, there are things like setbacks and light planes, and even floor area ratio definitions that we could modify. So I would be in favor of modifying some of the definitions of our zones to kind of restrict the total mass to get the kind of buildings that I think most people expect. You know, as you campaign, you talk to a lot of people, and a lot of people are shocked at kind of the mass of buildings that we've been getting lately, pushed out right to the sidewalk, you know, pretty much a cube filling the possible space.
So would you, the comp plan process is sort of is underway, which would be followed by zone revisions to reflect the comp plan, that's years off.
Right.
So are you advocating that the council take interim steps to make these kinds of zoning changes, setback, mass, FAR changes sooner than that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean...
And do you view that as interim, à la moratorium, or that you would advocate the council make changes to the zoning ordinance now that would then remain in effect after the comp plan process?
So a couple of things. I think our comp plan update process has gotten pretty messed up. It didn't really start with residents this time around, like it had it in the previous version. It kind of started as looking at area plans, looking at the Calav plan, and expanded in committees, you know, over a number of years, and the council really didn't see that update for quite a while. When it did come, they said, "We should talk to the community about this," and so they tried to engage the community after a bunch of updates had already been done, and I think very rightly, they put a pause on the comp plan update when they kind of saw what was happening. So yeah, I would advocate for some immediate zoning changes. You know, our current comp plan is pretty good, I'm not sure we need the kind of massive overhaul that we started to get ourselves into, so I would be interested as well if we could look at kind of a cleanup task to the comp plan, removing programs that have been completed or that are obviously out of date. I think there's quite a few of those that I feel would be entirely non-controversial, and so we could get an update out quicker, and with that kind of cleanup, I don't think we'd actually have to change as many zoning laws tied to that update, you know, and so we could look at tweaking some of the other things that would still fall within the current comp plan and that version of the comp plan. And then we could really start properly, continue with kind of this "our Palo Alto" process, which in my mind, it really started to get interesting right at the point that it ended. The final meeting was about 100 people brainstorming different scenarios for the future of Palo Alto, and it was very engaging, there were a lot of good ideas, and that was very hard to stop, so.
There have been some candidates who've talked about specific area plans throughout Palo Alto, having meetings with residents and having them kind of give kind of an impetus to different developments that could happen in their areas. I was wondering what you think of that idea?
I'm interested in it, I'm a little bit worried that it's just a replacement for PC zoning, and we'll end up kind of a similar situation where we're looking at a neighborhood, not looking comprehensively at the city, maybe pitting neighborhoods against each other, perhaps. And I'm also concerned that specific plans may take just as long, so I think it's a bit of a catchphrase right now. I am concerned about the Frye site, and I think somehow we need to speed up that process to really decide kind of what we'd like to see go in there before the developer comes forward with plans.
What do you see happening at the Frye site?
Well, I think it is a reasonable site for housing, I'd like to see housing plus some forms of community services. I don't have any specific idea in mind, but, you know, on this side of the city, there are some fewer resources, so, you know, perhaps a second city swimming pool, a park, potentially even an elementary school. But, you know, if it's just the absolute max of housing, you have a whole bunch of kids kind of between El Camino and Alma and no elementary school, and, you know, that's the situation I'm concerned about.
What about the intensification of that Frye's property in terms of transportation? It's kind of locked in there, not very accessible from any place other than El Camino.
Yeah, it's a really tough intersection, you know, something would have to be done with the roads, I think, you just can't keep putting more stuff in there. I was very concerned about the J. Paul project as well, and I did a walk door-to-door in that whole neighborhood, and it was pretty interesting, a lot of people weren't even aware that this J. Paul project was going to go in directly across the street from them, and I think the traffic there would have been, you know, extremely bad.
Well, when you say something would have to be done about the roads, what do you mean? I mean, what are the options?
Well, so again, you know, coming up to speed on a lot of issues in the city, but that overleaf in general, you know, I, again, I haven't, I would go to experts, I haven't come up with a specific plan, but there's some very dangerous kind of merge lanes there, the Oregon Expressway up to Alma, and that, you know, the Park Boulevard streets, you know, so potentially there's the other, I can't remember the name of the street, the one that comes into Frye's. I mean, I think that street would have to change in some way, be widened or something, there'd be a ton of traffic if there were houses in there.
Now, the J. Paul project, the plug was pulled on that last December, but I know there was a lot of talk about the process that had occurred up until then, and I was wondering what you would have done differently had you been on the council and the project came in front of you?
Yeah, I mean, to my mind, a lot of this stuff ties together, you know, staff is kind of overloaded, and at the same time, we're spending months on these large projects that clearly exceed our zoning. I would like to see people say no much quicker, and, you know, if something is just, you know, beyond, way beyond her current zoning, you know, that we just not try to keep tweaking the edges and keep those projects alive for so long.
So you don't think that the public safety building carrot was worth it in that case?
I don't, not in that situation. I mean, it was completely built-out property, it was going, I think, to 300%, so.
Okay. On the topic of housing, you were just mentioning that you were very involved in the housing element, I'm curious what your vision for the type of housing that Palo Alto needs and where that would be located?
Yeah, so it was a really interesting process, very first meeting of this working committee, staff presented a solution and said, "What do you guys think?" And to my mind, again, I was expecting us to discuss goals and priorities and then come up with a solution. And that initial solution had over half the housing just on South El Camino and on San Antonio Road, and I didn't feel, again, there were enough services, transportation connections weren't there. So I proposed kind of a top-down approach, that we looked at putting a third of the housing in the university area, university station, another third around the Calav station, Calav, and then the rest of it elsewhere in the city. And I think that sparked a good conversation, the regional housing mandate committee discussed it, and, you know, those areas, university, Calav, we're not talking two- or three-bedroom homes, we're talking studio apartments, one-bedroom apartments, and it's a type of housing inventory we have very little of in Palo Alto. So, you know, I don't see this building enormous amounts of housing, but, you know, some moderate housing and some additional types of housing units, near-walkable services makes sense to me.
Downtown is in the midst of trying to sort out its parking problems, and I'd like to understand your views on the downtown parking, the residential parking permit system that's under consideration, and whether you have any problems about that or whether you're fully behind it?
Well, so, you know, we're taking a number of steps to address parking finally. Again, a couple of years ago, when I was looking at the city and thinking, you know, "How can I get involved?", one of the first people I met was Nielsen Buchanan, and so I've been talking to Nielsen for quite a while and been familiar with his efforts on parking. So, yeah, in terms of residential permit, you know, it's done properly and I'm definitely in favor of it. I think it should be similar to what happened in college terraces, and that neighborhoods can decide kind of on a block-by-block basis. You know, I'm hearing some pushback now from kind of the outer reaches of the area, people who don't see a problem today, you know, and I think they should have a choice if they don't, if they don't want to have a permit parking yet. You know, potentially with permits closer to town, people will park further out, and then they'll, they'll want a permit program later on. I also think it should be free to residents initially. But, you know, it's not just permits, I mean, we're such a big hole really in parking, I think we do need to look at a new garage, you know, it's TDM measures, all kinds of things, and, and again, one thing I'd really like to get is better data, better information. You know, I'm hearing stories from neighbors who see people park in front of their house, and they ask where they're going, you know, and they're biking over to Stanford. So we've had, Stanford's been really good about its TDM program, but it's been taking advantage of our free parking and parking in the neighborhoods.
One of the issues that seems to come up is, and it was true with Charleston and Rastodaro as well, just cumulative impacts and the fact that plans for, whether it's road changes or development, are made kind of on a case-by-case basis. And I'm wondering how is it, what kind of mechanism is it that the city is lacking at this point for identifying and evaluating potential cumulative impacts?
Yeah, that's where I really think data comes in. I mean, on this parking issue, the conversation started, they asked the city, "What's our current parking deficit?", and they said, "We don't track that number." So, you know, I think that, again, that's one of the reasons I'm running, is all these projects have been looked at almost independently. You know, you see a ruling that there's no cumulative, there's no impact, but cumulatively, we know there are impacts. And so I think just we need to get much better at tracking that data and measuring that data. You know, I'm not a traffic expert, but they put it in grades previously, I think we're switching to a new mechanism soon, but, you know, so if you're already a grade F and you had a little more traffic, you're still a grade F, and they say that's no impact, but, you know, clearly there is.
So would you favor every single project having some sort of evaluation of cumulative impact going to that level?
Yeah, absolutely.
You have indicated that you want to spend a good amount of time trying to resolve the Coverley situation, and I'm wondering how you define success there, and what is your vision for Coverley?
You know, I think there was a lot of good work done by the Citizens Committee, I don't know if you've seen that report?
Sure.
Huge, huge stack. And so it's 27 acres, it's probably the last big chunk of land in town, and I think they had some really good recommendations, undergrounding the parking, two-story buildings, and there's room for both the high school and the community center. But the school district and the city have been on different timeframes. So I've been talking to a lot of the school board members, a lot of the school board candidates, and I think, you know, with some new council members and some new school board members, I'm meeting with our new superintendent tomorrow, and, you know, I think there's a good opportunity now to really agree to a long-term plan for Coverley. And to me, that would be success, just agreeing to the plan, perhaps enabling the city to begin construction on a community center, with the school kind of knowing what its plan was, so even if they're not ready for another five years to start construction on the school, you know, that's fine, we're not just stuck in limbo with no agreement on what's going to happen there.
So the school district has basically been unwilling to put any timeframe whatsoever on its plans for the site, preferring instead to just indicate that they have a long-term desire to hold on to the site and ultimately use it as a school again, but in the meantime, they just assume the city continue to pay them a lease income.
Right.
How do you view us moving beyond that point? Because until there's a clear timetable, the city really isn't in a very good position to invest in that property without the school district's commitment.
Well, so again, that's where I'm hoping, maybe some new personalities can shift the discussion, I think. And again, I haven't been in those discussions, but my sense from the outside is maybe people have kind of dug into their positions a little bit. And so again, yeah, I mean, you totally understand it, if I was on the school side, I have this great insurance policy and I have money coming in, but that lease is also coming up, and so I think it's an opportunity for people to really come together and work at what's best for the entire city. And so my hope is that with that attitude, we could get people on the same page.
I wanted to ask you about the funding of city services. You had written in, I think, the PAN survey that you think that there isn't a fair sharing of funding for city services, and I wanted to ask you what kind of mechanism you're thinking of or what kind of means?
Well, so things like the transportation occupancy tax, I think, are valid measures, you know, in terms of who's paying, you know, residents or commercial property owners. You know, I've actually been digging more and more into those numbers, Council member Schmidt has presented them several times, where he talks about, you know, how residential or how property tax has shifted from commercial to residential, and, you know, I think he's talking a lot about discretionary general fund money, and so it comes down to these cumulative impacts and impacts of new buildings. If we're taking those general fund money to mitigate these impacts from residents, that just doesn't seem fair, so, you know, there seems to, we should, again, I think, tie it to the buildings and the developments, and that's like what I'm talking about, like with Frye's, with perhaps a specific plan there that includes some community benefits that the developer would pay for.
Would you favor another kind of business tax?
Potentially, I mean, I would like to look into it. I mean, I know it's not popular with the business community, but Palo Alto's one of the few cities that doesn't have one.
And in terms of the staffing of the city versus outsourcing, you made a comment that you think that there should be...
Yeah, I should make another comment on the business tax. Yeah, I think one thing that it would be good to have a discussion about is, you know, the business community, this idea of paying their fair share, I mean, the reason they want to be here is because of the kind of high-tech workers that are available here, and so I really think they should be willing to, and that it's really an investment in maintaining a place where they have a great employee pool, so, just want to make that point.
Fair enough. Full-time staffing versus outsourcing, are you in favor of converting some of the funding that went into outsourcing so that staffing could be lowered back into full-time staffing?
Not necessarily, I think, I think we need to be very careful of what we outsource versus what we have in-house. You know, what I worry about is knowledge being lost, so I think the key knowledge positions, and certainly the heads of knowledge areas departments, should be in-house, but just like in private industry, I think, you know, we should use outsourcing to supplement staff, to do maybe shorter-term projects, and I also think it's a totally valid thing to use for something that makes sense to be outsourced, where you're not really worried about losing that institutional knowledge. You know, we have a huge unfunded pension liability, and I think using outsourcing is a good way to help prevent that from getting worse.
There's a lot of concern about California Avenue going the way of the city avenue in terms of its loss of retail and losing its sort of community charm. What steps, if any, do you feel the city should be taking to constrain and control the future California Avenue's business district?
I'm definitely in favor of ground-floor retail protection. I think with Calav, we should look at a local business or non-franchise business protection as well. San Francisco has some pretty interesting laws that they apply to different neighborhoods to give them different flavors, and, yeah, I'm definitely in favor of that. You know, and then with downtown, I think we need to consistently have ground-floor retail protection. You know, office space is so lucrative right now, it's just pushing out retail, and, you know, we have gaps in our coverage downtown, and we've seen the results of what happens with places like Zebidose and other places further off of University Avenue.
Well, the other thing we've seen in university is the replacement of traditional retail with restaurant businesses.
Right.
And that's a whole other level of government intervention or control if one attempts to control what type of retail goes in. You've mentioned controlling for chains.
Yes.
Are you concerned that California Avenue could basically become Restaurant Row as...
I am, and again, other cities have had, I think, quotas for different types of retail, and again, it would be something I'd like to look at and learn a little bit more about. But, you know, if you said on Calav that, you know, "We're going to have a maximum of five nail salons and 10 restaurants," you know, I'm not, I don't want the government to like specify exactly what's on the street, but I think if you gave ranges that probably exceed what's there today, you would at least prevent the entire street from turning into another Castro Street or something.
What communities have you seen that sort of approach work in?
So I don't have any specific ones right now, I've just read about some of them doing it, so.
There's a lot of concern about Buena Vista, and I'm wondering what your vision is for what the city council could do, if it should do anything, to step in and address the potential displacement?
Yeah, I mean, you probably know that the council may need to act in a quasi-judicial way on this issue, so rather than talk about maybe specific solutions, I would say that I'm really concerned about forcing people out of town, people, you know, kids in our schools. So I would want to find a positive solution where those people weren't forced out of town, whether it's on that site or somewhere else, you know, through our affordable housing programs, you know, but I don't really want to propose specific solutions right now.
Ruling on the application is the quasi-judicial decision that you've been advised as other candidates have to be careful about commenting on. The future of the site, how it's zoned, and any role the city might play in determining how that property moves forward is not quasi-judicial.
Yeah.
So could you please address what your vision is for the zoning and use of that property, and the role the city should or shouldn't play in trying to create the development that reflects that vision?
I can say that I'm not in favor of upzoning generally or on that site, and so if the value of that site was based on getting additional zoning, you know, I would not be in favor of upzoning that site.
Okay, so the other, others might term upzoning as a creative PC project that might provide affordable housing at a greater density than the current zoning allows. So I want to make sure that we get our terms straight.
Sure.
So I don't know if you view a PC project for that property as similar to upzoning or not, but what would you be open to in terms of development on that property?
So you raised a really good point, I guess, about affordable housing, because even without PC zoning, I think there are also provisions for 100% affordable housing and density bonuses and that kind of thing. So, again, with that particular property, if there were a way the city and the property owner and the residents could come to an agreement, you know, because it's a project that's in process right now... you know, because it's a project that's, that's in process right now, I think I would look very hard at, you know, unilaterally changing the zoning in the middle of the project. And what that would, and what that would mean for the city, you know, from a legal perspective. So I'm definitely not in favor of upzoning for luxury apartments. And I would, I would definitely entertain perhaps ways that, you know, it could be turned into affordable housing if all the parties, you know, could come to an agreement.
You stated that you want to enhance opportunities for public input on decisions, which sounds great. And I'm wondering, given that everyone's so busy these days and that there are commission meetings that people could attend until, up until the council decisions on some projects, it just doesn't seem like sometimes, sometimes there's this lag of public awareness of a project until it gets to a certain point.
Yeah.
What would you suggest or what do you think as a council member you would do to encourage people to get involved much earlier?
You know, there's a couple of, I mean, one thing that strikes me off the bat is ARB meetings at 8:30 in the morning. It's just very few people can do that. But outside of that, you know, I think better use of technology, really, you know, trying to do more things online. Like again, there's been a lot of discussion about closed-door meetings and that kinds of thing. You know, I would, I would think entertaining just putting my calendar online in a public format so people can see who I'm meeting with. You know, unless it legally has to be a private meeting. And I think, you know, council members need to be going out into the community. I would like to continue my involvement in neighborhood groups as a council member and hear what people are thinking about from that perspective. And you know, our city website is, is pretty complex and it can be very difficult to find things sometimes. So I don't know if there are ways to improve that so that people can find information more easily. But I think it's an orientation. You know, I definitely want to be open and, and oriented to bringing people in.
The city has taken a pause in trying to figure out how to deal with overnight camping in cars, sleeping in cars, that trying to get a grip on those problems due to some of the court decisions that have been reached. I'm wondering if you could describe what you believe the needs are in terms of trying to regulate this, this issue? And whether you would be supportive of a more narrowly defined ordinance?
More narrowly defined than what we have today.
Well, we have an ordinance that's not being enforced because of the legal situation. So yes, more narrow that would potentially overcome some of the legal issues.
I'm not really in favor of cracking down on, on car camping. I mean, if we could find some locations like, like again, like Coverly, where they've tried it in the past. You know, again, we have a serious housing shortage. We have people under pressure. So I think we need to find ways to help those people. And yeah, so I, I'm not really focused on trying to regulate that more. But if there are maybe parts of the city where we could encourage, you know, that to happen, you know, and if there's ways we can get them. You know, our, our whole homeless infrastructure is just understaffed. And so it's not, it's not clear like where you could direct those people to, but if there's ways we can help, help people.
So the, the neighborhoods that have felt impact by people parking their cars or vehicles in front of their homes and are residing there in front of their homes.
Yeah.
I'm not clear on whether you believe there should be no regulations regarding that? Or whether that should happen, but in conjunction with providing some alternative?
Well, obviously if they're, if they're breaking any laws or causing disturbances, you know, I think, you know, we should involve the police and, you know. But yeah, it was more of the latter, that we should try to encourage those people to go to other, other locations if they're, if they're being a nuisance. But you know, it's not, it's not a situation where I feel like we should crack down, you know, really hard.
Probably have time for one more, Justin.
Have we gotten to the PC?
No.
Question? Okay.
Probably ask that.
Yeah. So there's more time on the PC zoning currently, but I'm wondering what you would tweak? Or would you change anything about the use, the structure of that PC?
Yeah, I, I think I would, I would definitely favor tweaking PC zoning. I think we need to define the types of benefits we want. And again, for me, I think affordable housing or senior housing, those are all good categories. It's hard for me to see. I, I really, I think, I think the PC benefit should be intrinsic to the project. I think we need to get away from bartering and, you know, having an office building be a PC because of some separate benefit. So I think that would actually, you know, we might, we might lose out on some opportunities, but I think we would also eliminate a lot of the issues that people point to that are problems with PCs.
So you would have some sort of menu of allowable benefits per se?
Right. You know, and I think, I think we should also follow up on the enforcement side of that. So our PC ordinances do have enforcement clauses that typically haven't been used.
So hypothetically, how much more commercial development would you allow someone to build over the zoning in exchange for five units of affordable housing on top of the building?
Well, so again, there's state laws that we have to follow, but.
No, over and above what city law mandates. It's part of a PC proposal.
Yeah.
This is essentially what the Gateway Project was all about in terms of those original PC benefit offerings. Big building, much bigger than the zoning allows in exchange for a few apartments of affordable housing.
Yeah. So in general, like I said, I, I don't, I'm not sure that commercial buildings make sense as PCs. So if we're, if we're adding, you know, 200 workers and we're getting residents for eight adults, to me, that's not a great trade-off.
So when you said the PC zone should focus on affordable housing and senior housing as benefits, you didn't, you didn't mean the additive benefits, the public benefits associated with a commercial development?
No.
You meant?
I meant.
A PC project?
If we wanted to exceed zoning to be able to put in, say, affordable housing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in.